Located on the northerly portion of the site and would then taper. So there was an intrusion and my client agreed to remove that. As to the first floor plan, which I'd asked you to show, there was a question as to, there were two, was shown on the plan or suggested, that there were two kitchens. My client has completely removed that. It was his position that they were all one kitchen. However, to remove any confusion, it is now just a dinette. He is agreeing that that is absolute. He does not want anything more than what is shown on the floor plan. That leaves us with the only change that in the floor plan in any manner would be that portion of the addition that would be called the den. That is 10 feet by 13 feet, and it is only one story. You'll note where it's located, that there is absolutely no effect upon the side yard in any manner. So the only change at this time would be that den area. The other changes we have made to eliminate any question, and that would, and there would be no side yard issue of any kind as to where that is located. All the other bulk requirements are met in their entirety. I believe it is important that we look at when the property was built, it was built in 1966, and because of changes, there is now a legal nonconforming use of the site. My client purchased the property and had lived there with his family for some 20 years, and he wants to remain a resident of the city. He wants to, however, improve his property and get additional space in his home. The variation that he is requesting as to the side yards currently exist, the side yards are not changing in any manner. He removed what was called a tower. It was very minimal, but it was done for aesthetics, but he's removed it to eliminate any question as to that. I would call it a bay window or an acta gun. I would also point out in evaluating this, that the variation that we are looking at, if you would also consider your 75% rule. I've talked to staff with regard to it and have evaluated, I believe I understand it, and that is that if there's a lot of record and all other matters are satisfied, the side yards on here could be 75% of the requirement. My understanding, therefore, is that the side yard that he could build on today, and this happened at 261 Montrose, they filed a petition and the 75% rule kicked in, and as a result of that 75% rule, he did not need the variation. The 75% rule would make the side yard requirement on this property as it currently exists 5.625 feet. That is 75% of 7.5, the required side yard. Applying that rule, however, he could obtain a variation without, I mean, he'd be allowed to get a permit without getting a variation, but in this instance, he is slightly over that. On the south, and you will note on the south side of the property, Gorman, if you would show them the, there you go. On the south side of the property, you would note that he is 5.6 feet. That would be less than an inch, that he's really asking for a variation if you would apply that 75% rule. On the north, he is 5.27, and again, applying that rule, he is only asking for a variation of 4.26 inches. If this is, and my understanding is, and I've talked to you again, staff, if this be true, and that is what happened on Montrose, this is minimal at best. It is a minimal request at best for this variation. Again, in looking at this question, it is my understanding, and your staff report indicates this issue, it is not the first time that it has come before you. It's come before you numerous times, and based upon the staff report, it is my understanding that the city council has viewed this as a hardship and have routinely granted variations similar to this or even greater than the one that we are requesting this evening. Finally, I believe that there was a question as to neighborhood or chain, and I would suggest to you that just four doors to the north, there is a home that is under construction. I know it's across the street, but four homes to me going north or in any direction is still in my neighborhood, and that is a brand new home that is being constructed, definitely a two-story. You would look to the rear of my client's property, and that is behind his property and potentially one or two doors south of my client's property. Again, there is a home being constructed that again is a two-story. I do not believe that these are not in the neighborhood, and therefore, I don't believe that this addition would in any manner change the neighborhood. It is what is happening today. I would ask a question that the addition my client is proposing is keeping with the character of the new homes that are being constructed in the neighborhood. It would not in any manner adversely affect the values of the property. It would be an addition, it would enhance the values of the surrounding properties. At this time, I have submitted to you letters from six different homeowners, one of them, it's my understanding, lives adjacent to the site, who are all in favor of this. I would, at this point, be happy to read those and when it comes to positive testimony, if you would want, or I'll just tender those to you. In summary, I believe that there's no question the variation is consistent with what has happened in the past and the decisions of the council, and I'd ask you this evening to be consistent with your past practices. I believe that the residence we are proposing is consistent with the surrounding homes that are being constructed. If you go down the street, four homes, you go to the rear of the property, if you go down Cedar, a little farther, there are two-story homes. It is what is happening. I think it is also important to note that a two-story could be built on there immediately, right now. Might have to demolish it, it might cause adverse effect on my client because he's been a resident for 20 years, but it could happen. Any one of the homes in the neighborhood could be sold and a two-story could go there. I think that's an important point to keep in mind. The variation currently exists. We're not asking that we, in fact, increase the variation as to the side yards. We're asking that those side yards remain constant. I would also point out to you, if you apply your 75% rule and you do the math, really, the variation that we are requesting, if you consider the Montrose scenario, is minimal, as I pointed out. It is a 75% of the side yards. I do not believe that it changes the neighborhood as I've indicated, and I believe it can only enhance the values of the property. Based upon these facts, and on behalf of my client, I would ask you to approve their request for variation. This time, I'd like to thank each and every one of you for your consideration of this matter. If you should have any questions of either my client or our builder, we'd be happy to attempt to answer them. And again, I apologize for any confusion that I caused before your zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Any member on the committee have any questions of the attorney while he's up there? No. If not, I believe there are people who wish to speak to this issue, Mr. Phil Bendix. Here again, we're going to keep it to a minimum. Yes, step back, podium, please. Let's please not try to keep repeating the same issues, you know, if it's something that keeps up repeatedly, I'm going to call you on that, but everybody will get a chance to speak to the issue, be limited, and keep it direct. So, Mr. Bendix?
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to voice our opinions. As far as Ramon and Esther, first time I met them since I moved into 109 South Cedar is just a few months ago. I mind my own business, been there for 11 years with my wife. They've always seemed to be pretty nice people. Hello, goodbye, take care of their house. And I think that what they're doing is a good thing. It's happening everywhere. Change is inevitable, and not to allow it would stagnate that street. And people worried about property values, they wouldn't be able to sell their houses because nobody could do any changes there. So I, I'm all favor of him doing what he does as long as it's within the codes, and that's it. I wish him good luck. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Lance Koopish. I'm a resident of Wooddale also, and I'm totally in favor of them being approved on their variances. It seems to me that this is a very infinitesimal change and that any improvement to our community, any money put into a residence increases the value of everybody's property, and since other variances, I know for a fact have been granted that were greater than this, it appears to me that it would be discriminatory if they weren't approved. But I appreciate that the decision's in your hands. I would also restate that since the staff has already approved it, it appears to be a more than reasonable request. Thanks.
Yes, my name is Patricia Stoll, S-T-O-L-L. I live at 145 South Cedar in Wooddale. And first off, I, there are quite a few of us from Cedar Street who are here this evening, and one of the questions that has come up with regard to the redrawn plans, we, we hope that we will have a chance to see more than a blurry image of these before this goes too far. We'd like to know, just as well as anybody else, what we're dealing with here, especially if the changes are positive. I am also making an assumption, maybe I missed something, but the people who have risen to speak in favor this evening of this, the two parties, maybe I missed their addresses and where they live. I assume that they are within the 250 feet, which qualifies a person to voice an opinion on this issue. Well, that's, okay, you're within the 250 feet, you received notices from the...
Ma'am, please address your comments to the chair, Mr. Knite, board of the council as a whole.
I'm sorry. Again, I assume that they're within the 250 feet, which legally allows them to voice their opinion. I have some issues that the plans, the original plans that were submitted showed two complete kitchens, and we all anticipated that they would be removed. I see that apparently, if I am reading this diagram correctly, that the kitchen on the left here, or what was the kitchen at one point, on the left corner, upper left corner, has been quote "removed," and it appears that the exit, if I'm reading it correctly, the exit remains there. The appliances have been removed. All right. I take it I'm missing something. Because if this plan is put forth with the implication on the original plans of two kitchens, we in the neighborhood would be set up, as would the city, for possibly dealing with another situation of multifamily dwelling in an R3, single-family area. I guess I'm a little short on trust of what I'm being told by this time about this house. Things have not to date been totally forthright. With regard to the house blending in with its surroundings, the house as proposed is not going to blend in with the surroundings. One of the other people who will be speaking tonight will show you a superimposed picture with the house showing the two neighbors on either side. Okay? The proposed house is a very fine picture, and it's a very fine house. We've had questions arise from total strangers on Montrose, on Central, arise with why would anybody build that house in this neighborhood? This is a middle-income neighborhood. It is filled with people who moved there years back. I've lived there since 1970, Valentine's Day. We raised our children in this neighborhood, and most of us expected that we could live through old age in the family home. This house is going to raise our taxes. This is not a unique situation to our neighborhood. This is happening all over Wooddale. It is artificially raising, inflating the property values that have no value, no meaning, until I go to sell it, but it does affect my assessed valuation, and it will affect the amount of taxes that the people who are on middle incomes and fixed incomes are not going to be able to afford, the more and more of the mini mansions that go in. It used to be in Wooddale that there was, there were middle-class neighborhoods, lower-middle class, middle class, and you had the affluent. And if you could afford to, you lived in the woods or in Royal Oaks. That is changing, house by house. This town is turning into a neighbor, one giant neighborhood of the affluent, with many, many mansions going up next to ranch houses, and even smaller, and being crowded onto postage stamp lots. The trees are being ripped out. This is now beginning to happen on Cedar Street. The pictures that Mr. Breen persists in showing are isolated pictures that make it look like Donald Trump is in our neighborhood. This is not true. I have here a tape. We did a walk-around with a camcorder so that you can go from house to house and see what's there and see the nature. The nature of South Cedar Street, or South Cedar, well, depending on which corner you stand on, Cedar Avenue or Cedar Street, is either single-story ranches or split levels, buy and try levels. And I am, I brought this for you, just in case you don't have the time or the opportunity to get out and go through the neighborhood. The four horses, four houses down or two houses south, I don't know where those pictures are coming from. The, so I'm saying that it's going to change the neighborhood. This is no longer ranches. This is the beginning of mini mansions, and it is going to affect our assessed taxes. And there's no equity in this, and it is within your power to begin doing something about this, something concrete. Moving on, I have just two more points, I think, to make here.
Ma'am, we, ma'am, we, can you make this, we have...
I said I have two points.
We're trying to, okay.
I understand that.
First point was long.
Nobody stopped Mr. Breen.
Okay.
All right. One of the things you will see on this is the view of the south side, the rear south side of the house, taken from another yard, the house at 121. And what it will show is that there is settling going on in the south side of this residence, not the garage, the house. The concrete is sinking in, the tuck pointing, or the mortar is cracked severely, and it has been repaired and it is re-cracking. This is a common problem in the area around us. This foundation on the south side, which they don't want to change, shows every indication of not being able to support one story, let alone two additional stories, a second floor and a full stand-up garret attic, 13 feet, 29 and a half. I suggest that somebody take a look because they will be having to tear out or do some sort of supportive work on that foundation in order to put two more stories on top of it. If that be the case, with all other things considered, I suggest this is not a hardship situation. They're going to be calling Atlas or American Foundation or one of them to come in and do support work. They may as well, please, take out the foundation, bring, on those two sides, bring it in and bring it up to code, which will enhance our neighborhood for anybody who wants to do other improvements. And by the way, an improvement is hardly tearing your whole house down. The, last thing is, I guess I've covered my points.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'm asking that at the very least, the city require them to meet the current code and thereby set a new standard.
Thank you.
And who do I give this to?
Give it to the mayor, or Eugene. The mayor can take it. Mr. Chairman, I have one, can I make one comment before we get another resident?
All the two back?
With respect to the 250-foot rule, that is a requirement that we put in, and my suggestion, probably about three years ago, where we used to give notices by just putting the sign in the front yard, and you put the notice in newspaper that nobody reads anyways. We changed that. We said when we were going to make a variance request or subdivision, we wanted the neighbors in 250 feet to get a certified letter as to what's going on, just to get the people more informed. It doesn't prohibit other people from coming forward and speaking, they're residents of Wooddale. In fact, one of our last public hearings, we had, we had actually residents that were not even residents of city, they were county residents that were speaking on the issue. So there is no law that says we can only let residents within 250 feet speak on these issues. Thank you.
Ma'am?
Sure.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but you cannot, you know, we were not going to have this back and forth with the audience. You know, as far as the issue of the foundation that will be looked at, it's addressed before any permits or anything is ever allowed. The billing department does go out, they do evaluate it, and if they make the determination that the foundation will not support any new additions, that kills the project right there, it stops the order. So that concern, I mean, is addressed. Okay? Anyone else?
My name's Stephen Koopish also. I do, I'm a Wooddale resident. I, first of all, want to apologize, that was my phone that was ringing. I thought I turned it off. I do apologize to everybody. I'll make this really brief. My relationship to the Novoa family is, they're friends of mine. And all throughout Wooddale and all throughout the surrounding subdivisions and neighborhoods, there are new houses coming in. Two stories, beautiful, every, everything. Everyone's starting to live what, what they can do. The Novoa, the, the Novoa family has worked very hard for many, many years, and they finally are going to splurge on themselves to actually build a nicer and better house for themselves and their family, and hopefully their future of their family. Right now, they've been living away from their house because their house is not livable because of the construction that had already been allowed, from my understanding, and really, in the end, all they want to do is just be able to build their house so that they can have a house to live in, which they don't have right now. If you look anywhere else, change is happening. Two-story houses, and it's not just in Wooddale, and it's beautiful. I've had many friends go, come through Wooddale and comment on how just amazing the changes are. Even from Bensonville with the new houses coming in, it's just giving a whole new, fresher look, and it's just making this neighborhood and this town more appealing to people to move in. There are changes, and they're for the better, and changes happen, whether you like it or not. If change doesn't happen today with this, it's going to happen tomorrow with something else. So really, in the end, I'm, I'm all for it, obviously, as you can tell, and I really just want my friends to have their house so that they can live in, you know? As cheesy as it sounds, the old American dream, you know? And that's it. I'm no lawyer, I'm no contractor, so I don't know specifics. I just wanted to talk, you know, from my heart. All right, thank you.
Mr. Noick, he addressed the point, he said the house is not being lived in. Do you know about this, or any reason why?
I believe that there were certain, certain renovations going on within the dwelling itself, but I have no personal knowledge of it not being occupied. Quite possibly, the, the petitioner might be able to shed some light on that as to why.
Yeah, I'd like to hear why.
Well, I'm sure my client would be happy to answer that. He's lived through it, so I'd ask him to come up.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Honorable alderman, Mr. Williams, Mr. Noick, to answer that question is, the reason we moved out of the house is my wife and my oldest son are both asthmatic, and recently, every time we clean the house, we're getting the loose cellulose insulation from the ceiling. I don't know where it's coming out, but we found out that after my son is away for, for five years studying college, coming back, it aggravates his asthma again, and we suspect some of this insulation, you know, on the attic is triggering the allergen, allergens for my kid and my wife.
Is that the reason you want to build up?
That's, it's just the physical well-being of my family. It's only that one. And my son coming back from college, he got the smallest room in the, in the house, and I think my son deserved to have a bigger bedroom. That's why we, we plan to build this, this, this house. And we lived in Wooddale for 20 years, and we decided to stay longer in Wooddale.
While you're up there, let me ask you, you have a lot of room to the back, to the rear of your house? Have you ever considered moving or building an addition to the back instead of going up?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Noick, go ahead.
Thank you. If the petitioner were to, to move or add an addition to the rear of the property, there are other factors involved. The lot coverage issue might be, might be an issue, as well as the fact that it is less expensive to go up than it is to go out.
I think because on the platypus survey that we have, it looks like they have ample room to go back without...
But, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
All the two back?
The bottom line, we, we have a 20-year resident that's looking to make an improvement on their property, that actually want to stay in Wooddale and aren't running to Naperville, they're not running to Almhurst, they actually want to stay and make an improvement here. If, I understand the characters of the neighborhood, that it's a lot of ranches, but that will not be forever, and just because they were built originally as ranches, doesn't mean that we want to have stag over there, that we keep them ranches forever. We have an addition that went on at Mount Claire, or Montrose and Cedar, never came before the city council because they went straight up and they were not required to get a variance. The only reason they're here tonight is because that when it was originally built, it was built five and a half feet, which obviously was either allowed back then before the code was changed, or it was built incorrectly, but now it's legal, nonconforming. So if he tore this house down, we could not stop him from building a two-story house, which would still be different than the other houses around there. Alls we're doing is allowing the same variance or the same extension vertically up. He's not increasing that side yard impact any more than already exists. We allowed this on Dunley Court. There's an addition going on in Montrose right now that he showed a picture of. You know, what's the neighborhood? You know, the neighborhood is really, it's all of South Wooddale. That's, that's what's happening a lot in the first ward, and, you know, for us to deny this person who wants to go up or to say maybe we should go to the rear, we're not in the business of designing people's houses. Here's a 20-year resident that wants to make a... Same rules apply, even if I say good stuff, do the applause at the end, or if you hate me. If he wants to go straight up, you know, we should allow him to do that. He's not increasing any of the variances that he has currently, right now. And as far as the two-kitchen rule, I don't know why the plan is drawn originally that way. Our code does not allow for two kitchens. I understand that there would be a concern, if you saw two kitchens, especially on multiple floors, that you might have multi-families living in there. We passed an ordinance about a year and a half ago, or two years ago, that addresses overcrowding, because as much as we have the McMansions going up in areas, we have an overcrowding issue, also in the First Ward. We have two, three, four families living in one house. So we're getting aggressive with that ordinance. Our police and the building department are watching those things. So, if Mission Novoa builds this and moves out in three years, and there are multi-family, we have the ability to go in there and, and cut that off. So, the code doesn't allow for two kitchens, there are not two kitchens here, so, again, I think we should allow the variance.
How many other people wish to address this? One, two, three, okay, um, four, okay, five. Can you, limited, please, to three minutes, and try not to, there you go. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Melissa Stoll, living at 145 South Cedar, about four doors down from the proposed home. And I currently live in the tallest building on the street. It is a two-story, a true two-story home, first floor and a second floor. It is shown on the video. And the, I, I just would like it known that a two-story house can be built so that it doesn't overpower the rest of the buildings around it, nor totally clash design-wise with it. Our house is, and it's basically out an L-shaped ranch, like all the other homes that are single-story. We happen to have a second floor on it. And with that second floor, we are 19 feet, eight inches tall, not 30, something that totally overpowers the rest of the neighborhood. When we moved in, we did, we were the last home to go on in the street, and we specifically designed the home so it would fit in with the rest of the neighborhood despite the second floor. So it fits in. I received this in the mail about the same time as Mr. Breen's letter. It's the Homepages Wooddale 2006. And in the middle of it, I happened to find a page about Wooddale. I'll read a paragraph from it. Despite Wooddale's recent...
Ma'am, ma'am, would you please use the microphone?
Despite Wooddale's recent rapid growth, its population increased nearly four-fold between 1960 and 1980. It remains an attractive place to explore and call home. The local government makes continual efforts to retain and maintain green spaces throughout the development process. The Wooddale Historical Society's projects and community activities also help preserve the quaint charm of Wooddale. Is quaint charm McMansions going up all over town, that are three times as big as the original home on which they're being built? Is quaint charm a threefold property value increase, thereby increasing everybody's taxes? As if the taxes of DuPage County aren't high enough, and DuPage County has some of the highest tax, property tax rates in Illinois and the whole United States?
All right, excuse me.
We don't have enough?
Can we please, you know, everybody's gonna get a chance, can you please give her the courtesy, you know? We're hearing everybody, so, please be courteous and continue, ma'am.
These homes are changing the face of the neighborhoods and the towns. They could be better designed to fit in with the existing structures, with people that have lived there 20 years, 30 years, and longer. I have lived there since 1970. And this can be done, and I'm sorry to see that it's creating the clash that it is, because people are not working together on this issue. In regards to some statements that were made, yeah, once the house is built, it, you know, we can always check and see, and we have tough laws that will allow the police to go in. Well, I've talked to some of the police, and it is very difficult to get evidence to support overcrowding, as we're trying to fight. These houses are pushing out the middle-income people in the, in our neighborhoods. And this is going to happen as long as the city councils and boards allow it to happen by allowing these variances to be passed. And if I heard correctly, also earlier this evening, Mr. Breen is asking for a variant that, you know, variance shouldn't be an issue right now, because we're within two inches of the 75% rule. Well, they're still not there by two inches. And Mr. Ptolemy, Alderman Ptolemy, you just informed us earlier, you turned down a request for change based on the ordinances in this town that are in place. And I think maybe we ought to continue to follow that line of thought. And we've got a rule in place, follow it and stick to it. There's not enough of this house left in this improvement process. It's a rebuild process, not improvement. There's not enough of the original house left to call this an addition, or to me, an improvement. And just take it down all the way, if need be. Start over from ground zero, have it all safe and sound and as pleasant as possible, if that's going to be the way this is going to go. Start from the beginning, follow the rules that you do have in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am? You want to...
My name is Deborah Spiden, I live in 216 Highwater, Wooddale. Mayor and chairman of committees, and ladies and gentlemen, I am part of this house, reason... I li, I, if I, I live in this, I, I have been living in this house over 31 years. I think just, just 31 years coming. And first I moved in, when I moved in, was so beautiful, and we forced to move in that house, because beautiful neighborhood and beautiful house. And still, it's beautiful town and beautiful old blocks. And I am, I am happy for my neighbor to improve their house and beautiful house. I admire that. But, when I think of my, my situation, I, I am retired, by the way, and I live in with a small amount of fixed money. And if they built a big, beautiful, two-story home there, then allowed to build there, then their block, and we are most, most neighborhood are elderly people. So, gradually people will sell the house, and our future may have to sell the house. If taxes improve, you know, raised, this year already raised the tax, I had to pay. And also, the, the, over there gentleman said, it's nice, improve, all, all town improve and progress, that's beautiful, sound beautiful and beautiful idea. But, as what I remember over 20 years ago, the Highwater, the, the 83 Highwater, that side, when they were building homes, I remember the developer, Mr. Johnson, he told, he told me, you have to build, I, I told him, I live with, live in the other Highwater, but she, he said, you have to build a two-story or so many square or feet house, you have, you have to build that, that. So I understood why not. We have to, should build the big homes, yes. But, come to our area, from south of Cedar, oh, no, Montrose, south of Montrose, Cedar, the south of Cedar, my, all that way, few ranch homes like mine, few ranch homes there, and then most birever homes in, like that. So, I like to keep as, why not, we cannot keep same level for a while. This time, I understand, maybe 20 years, 30, 15 years, maybe so, so fast, maybe 15, 20 years later, I understand. I was thinking, I said, this will be coming like this, improving like this, I like improving, improving like this, and few years later, my home will be, my town will be the lowest to price a house in, that's what I was thinking about. I think also, when, when I think, the gentleman showed the lawyer, lawyer showed the, the new, new homes they showed, he showed the new home, next east side of a block, new home, he showed the two-story home, yes, that, that house, or that block, of course, when you build a new home, and why not build the two stories? Fine. Also, that block had two stories about 10, 15 years ago, they, 20 years ago, they built the two stories. Also, Cedar, he showed the Cedar, also Montrose, that's, that block showed the new home. If he, if somebody show me the, if you can show me the exhibit C, they showed the two-story home, the new home, the corner, Montrose and, Montrose and Cedar, their corner, north east side of the corner, that two-story home, it was beautiful. I like that, yeah. I like it, look at it, it's beautiful. And next, next home, they just sold, next home is so small, so narrow, like if this is the old home like me, then the other home like this high, and it's not beautiful. So, I believe that house, somebody will future, think about to improve their home or build about that house. Okay, come to my, my, my block, if they build, somebody, if they allowed to build, then somebody sells already, my block, they put sign, the older people, they, they retired, and they were, I think, original homeowner, is already put, posted a sign. I think, I afraid that somebody, if they see this house building there, and then that house might front of my block house, if they sell their house, builder will buy, and then they will build a bigger home, then our taxes gonna get higher. Then eventually, I cannot afford the $10,000 tax, then I have to move out. It's beautiful, but I have to move out. So, in that case, if, if you don't consider our opinion, they permit to get the, to build that house, I think I have to loan the money and build, build a bigger, and I cannot afford the paid, payment again, so I eventually have to move out. I, I wanna, I don't want to go to condominium, I don't want to go to, still, I don't know, when I, nobody knows the future, but as long as I can move around, I want to leave my house, I want to stay in my house, but...
Okay.
That's the problem.
Ma'am, we gotta...
If you consider that, I'd be very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what we're gonna do, this is getting later and later, we do have other items on the agenda, and we have other committees. We'll go 10 more minutes for people who want to speak. How many wish to speak? Ma'am in the green jacket there, please? Could you, after, yes, go ahead, ma'am, you in the green sweater, please? 9 o'clock, we're gonna cut it off, folks, because we do have other business and a lot of other items.
Hello, my name is Helena Snarsky. I've been in the neighborhood roughly about 10 years. I originate from Norwich, Illinois, and I understand where everyone's coming from as far as not wanting the expansion of this home in whichever way they are planning. But times are changing, unfortunately, and neighborhoods have to change with the times. As far as taxes go, they do have tax freezes for senior citizens. My mother is one in Norwich, and they've been able to keep that down. The older neighborhood people are living just fine with the newer generation that's coming in, and they, yes, they are building mausoleums everywhere, it's just a new trend, and either you go with it, or the community loses in the end.